And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Carl Hauck?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Here.
Robert Mettler?
Here.
Mustafa Mansuray asks to be excused. Charles Brown, Robert Thomas, Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Godwin Amalola? And Chairman Orsini?
Here. Okay, so, regular meeting minutes from June 5th, 2019. Entertained a motion if there's no comments or corrections.
Move the minutes.
Seconded.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Oh, I don't think I was here. Oh, okay, yes.
It was on the list.
Okay, yes.
Okay, sorry. And Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
You're right, it was the second meeting.
Thank you.
Alright, so, I guess we have no resolutions, so, under discussion, we have an extension of time for 13 Somerset Street.
Can I ask that that request be carried to your next meeting?
Sure. Alright, with that, dispensed with quickly, we have another extension of time, Samir Shahada and Coco Chen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Pressler. I'm appearing on behalf of my clients who are quite behind me. I have written a letter to Mr. Healy concerning the extension of the time to file the subdivision deeds.
Okay, and, sounds pretty straightforward. What kind of extension would you be looking for?
I was asking for 90 days, but if you wanted to give me 120, that would be fine, too.
Well, rather give you that than have you come back again for another 30, so...
That would be fine.
Can you do the math for me? What does that come out to? Which date? Somebody do the math.
Four months.
Four months from when? Today?
The time for me to file is just about...
November 16th.
November 16th?
That would be fine, Mr. Chairman.
Board, okay with that?
Do you want me to make a motion? I'll move that we extend it till November 16th.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so now we're at the part of, we're gonna open the meeting to public comments. The rule here is that if there's a hearing elsewhere, and you're here to talk about that, so in tonight's case, that would be John Sudia, then save your comments for when we open the meeting for that application, otherwise, any other planning, comments are fair game. So with that, entertain a motion open.
I would move that the meeting be open to the public.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting's open to the public for any general planning comments.
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one coming forward, I would move that the public hearing be closed.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we get to John Sudia, appeal 19-00007.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of Mr. Sudia. This is an application for the request of a relief of condition that was imposed as part of a subdivision approval that was granted in 1995 by the planning board, when the planning board granted a minor subdivision approval to create two lots in the R40 zone. The applicant in 1995 was Michael and Olga Sudia. They have since passed on. The property in question is owned by my client, John Sudia, who is their son, who resides on the property. The application in 1995 created two lots, one for an existing single-family dwelling in which Mr. Sudia currently resides, and the other for another building lot, which Mr. Sudia owns and has never been built upon. The relief that we are seeking is that the approval provided for a 50-foot access easement from Amwell Road through lots 50, 51, and then continuing on approximately 320 feet into lots 5302 and 5301. The reason that it continued for 320 feet is actually beyond either me or my clients' understanding of why that condition was imposed. Currently, there is an access easement that gets to the property. Obviously, we will need to extend the access easement onto the property, so it can service both of the two lots. We are requesting that the board vacate approximately, agree to vacate approximately 284.98 feet of the easement as being unnecessary. And the reason we stumbled upon this issue, and the problem was that Mr. Sudia, who has the existing dwelling, wanted to put a porch in the front of his house, and then found out he can't put a porch in the front of his house because it would be within the easement. So, for this reason, we are requesting that the board allow us to vacate that portion of the easement that really, in our opinion, doesn't service anybody. We still have a 35-foot easement that would provide access to lot 5302, should that lot ever be developed. My site engineer, Mr. Sadowski, is here. He did meet with the TRC. He discussed this with the TRC, and it was reviewed. The only person I understand that didn't have the ability to comment on this was John House, because he was on vacation. And I would have no problem with if the board were willing to grant the vacation of the easement to make it subject to John's review and approval. And I would be happy to either answer any questions, or have Mr. Sadowski answer any questions.
So, can you summarize, you have a new exhibit to show the board, and we've provided that to them?
Right.
What the easement, instead of extending the length of lot 53.02, it would extend 35 feet?
Right.
Back from the two fronting lots?
Mr. Sadowski is here, but I think I can play engineer for about two minutes.
We're gonna refer to that as Exhibit A1.
A1, which was submitted to everybody, and they should have it in front of them. The current easement extends between lots 5301 and 5302, and runs all the way back and then terminates where 5301 wraps around. What we are proposing is to eliminate this portion of the easement, and allow 35 feet, so that if somebody is accessing where Mr. Sudia currently lives, he has sufficient area to access that property. And we, for illustrative purposes, showed that we can access the other lot with the 35-foot easement on the proposed lot 5302, should it ever be developed.
So let me summarize the nature of the TRC review. Their initial proposal was to, instead of having it extend 35 feet back, it was originally 15 feet. And the TRC basically said, "Well, we don't think that's enough to get a proper radius and driveway access." So we had initially recommended 50 feet. In response to that, Mr. Lanford had this produced, which shows 35 feet. We did go over this on Tuesday at TRC. As Mr. Lanford said, John House from Fire Prevention wasn't there. So what I would recommend is, if the board is inclined to grant this relief, to allow it to go down to 35 feet, subject to the review and approval of Fire Prevention.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mark.
This is a strange question. Will this allow the porch to go on the front of the house, or is there still a problem?
No, well, other than there's a potential setback violation, which I would have to go to the zoning board for, but it will allow the porch to be built outside of the easement.
Okay.
And that's why we wanted to reduce from 50 to 35, so that we can build a porch.
Okay. And then I have one question for Mr. Lanford. The exhibit that you have there has two areas where there's the driveway for 53.01 encroach in the... Well, encroach on 53.02, in an area that would no longer be covered by the easement. So how would you propose that that be addressed there, and then a little bit at the end?
We can remove that stone.
Okay.
But that's really unnecessary, and it could be taken out.
Pete, between lots 50 and 51, you call that area a 50-foot-wide street? What is that?
That was what was shown on the plan, but it's an easement. It's not a public street.
You could change that?
We could change the word to easement.
So does it actually practically change the width of the driveway that gets you from Amwell Road to?
No.
The house?
No. The easement remains the same, and as you can see, there is already a stone portion of it, and it's within that 50-foot easement.
And so how wide is that driveway? Roughly speaking.
It's various widths, but Mr. Sadowski can probably do a quick calculation. I was not entitled to use one of those things. I'm just a pseudo-engineer.
Did you stay on a holiday in Express last night, Pete?
Last week.
Mr. Sadowski? We gotta swear in, man. If you raise your right hand, you swear the testimony going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. I do. And...
You're a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey? Okay.
If you could state your name and spell your last name for the record, please? Hold on, give him the mic.
Ronald J. Sadowski, S-A-D-O-W-S-K-I, and I reside at 10 Edward Avenue, Edison, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Welcome. The driveway, upon reducing the width, so that it does not encroach lot 5302, is approximately 17 feet?
And coming in from Amwell Road, it's a various width, but what's about the average width along the main portion of the driveway?
The main portion of the driveway is approximately 20 feet, 22 feet, that area.
Alright, no, I mean, just thinking in the back of my head, right, we know John and his drive aisles, when we do something with parking, right, he always asks for 24 feet or whatever. I forget what RSIS is for this, but 17 feet seems somewhat narrow. And he's gonna say, "Well, what if you had to get a pumper truck back there?" I mean, we'll condition it on that, but I mean, I would expect some pushback, because 17 feet is narrow, even though that's not the entire width of the driveway.
I understand, that's why we'll meet with him and figure out what he needs or wants. Again, it's a stone driveway, and if we need to add some stone, we can do it.
Alright, any questions from the board? Okay, do you have your hand raised?
No.
Alright, so, I guess we need to open this to the public, so let's do that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the meeting be open for a public hearing on this application.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's open to the public for comment on this application?
Seeing no one coming forward on this application, I would move that its public hearing be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I don't think you need to summarize. I think we understand. So I'll entertain a motion on this matter.
I have one silly question. Silly question is, you keep saying 35 feet, but the plan shows 35.02. Is the .02 important? Do we want to include the .02?
No, it's actually 35.02 because it's not a, it's not parallel.
Okay.
So it's 35.00 for these two lines. Because the property's skewed, the surveyor's gonna pick up on that, and it's gonna be 35.02 at those two short lines, but it's an actual 35-foot-wide easement.
I'm confused, Mr. Vinyal.
I just wanna know what number you want me to put in.
What number do you want in the resolution? When the description's prepared, it'll show 35 feet.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to change the easement from 50 feet to 35.02 feet? No.
From 320 feet.
320 feet.
From 320 feet to 35 feet.
320 feet to 35.
Fire prevention?
That's subject to review by John House. And that also.
Alright, I will second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Alright, coming up next is work session and new business draft ordinances. So I guess this is your show, Mark?
Yep, yep, so, we're in work session mode now. So I've provided you two draft ordinances. The first one we have is the Frank's Hardware site. As the board is aware, you reviewed the draft rehab study, I think, a month ago. We have representatives of the intended redeveloper of the Frank's Hardware site and the site next to it. Their intention is to develop the front portion with a restaurant with drive-through in the front, and a self-storage facility in the back. I think I've made the board aware of this proposal over the last few months. And this is the proposed change to the redevelopment plan to accommodate it. The draft ordinance was provided in your packet, and I also provided some exhibits, a concept site plan, as well as some two- and three-dimensional renderings of the proposal that the applicant will eventually come before you for site plan approval for. But again, tonight, the purpose is to go over the ordinance that would allow this development to occur. So I'm gonna go through the ordinance real quick, and again, we do have representatives of the potential developer, who they can answer, obviously, better questions on who they are, what they're going to, what they want to build, et cetera. So as we've discussed in the past, the front portion of the site is in the Renaissance commercial zone. There are a few portions of the site that are in the rear, that are in the R7 zone. And the proposal is to add those eight small lots to the Renaissance commercial zone to allow the development to occur. Section 2 is simply a definition of self-storage facility. Section 3 is really the meat of the ordinance. This gets to the bulk standards that would be required for this development. There's a minimum lot size requirement, direct access to Route 27 would be required. Parking would essentially be determined at site plan. Self-storage is a very, I think, use-specific parking, very low typically. I've indicated based on the, or have proposed based on the concept plan, a minimum of 10 spaces, but such additional spaces as may be deemed necessary by the board at the time of site plan. I think rather than coming up with a specific requirement now, I think it's best, again, here at site plan, here there, intended operation, and then you can make that determination then. Minimum rear yards, 35 feet. If you look on the conceptual site plan, and that's the first exhibit, so that looks like this, has those kind of green highlights on there, you'll notice that the self-storage facility fronts on Eugene and Kevin Opuzio Avenue. So those would both be front yards. So the required setback from both of those rights-of-way would be 35 feet, and the concept plan would comply with that. As far as side yards, the ordinance proposes two different side yards. One is 5 feet, and that's the side yard that would be basically closest to Somerset Street. So this would be the side yard between the self-storage facility and the commercial use in front. And there, I've proposed a relatively small setback of 5 feet. But then the opposite would be required on the other side that adjoins the residential parcel. And there, the setback would be 55 feet. And then a similar type, smaller, 40 feet. There actually is no rear on this particular lot, but it'd be 40 feet and 55 feet. I've proposed building coverage and impervious coverage limitations that were derived from the concept site plan.
Well, that impervious coverage seems awfully high, Mark.
Now, that's something for the board to discuss. There are other ordinances. 85% for example is permitted. Actually, in the Renaissance commercial zone, 85 is the current max. So you can discuss whether you'd be comfortable going with 90 for this, or if you want to stick to 85.
So wait, what's in Section 4 where it's 85% is max impervious coverage?
That is, that's the existing impervious coverage.
Okay, so why don't we stick with that?
Well, that's for the board's discussion. Again, the draft is from their concept, and then it's up to you to decide whether you're comfortable with going above that, or if you want to stick to the 85.
So here's a question, though, in a more general sense. So, you know, we're changing this, or proposing to change it, for this specific development. Now, 5-foot, for example, setback is fine here because of what you mentioned, right? It being only the space between the commercial use and the self-storage facility. Suppose another self-storage facility comes in, we can change it again, because they're not supposed to be, they don't have this other commercial use, and they should have a larger side yard setback? I mean, I have a dim view of designing standards for a specific development. And not for a planning purpose.
I understand. I think there's a few things to consider. This is a redevelopment plan. So you do have the ability in the redevelopment plan to be more use-specific and site-specific. And I think also along those lines, that's why I did propose in the draft, larger setbacks where it adjoins sensitive land uses. So for example, the 55-foot side yard setback, where it adjoins a residential use. The 20-foot buffer requirement, which is the same buffer requirement that was, you did a similar type, the township did a similar type amendment to allow the Wawa next door. So I basically took the language from that ordinance in terms of the buffering, and included it in here as well.
So what you're telling me is you're able, at least in a redevelopment area, to tailor things more, so that if something else came in, say another self-storage facility that didn't have the same site-specific conditions that this one does, we could yet again?
Well, I think it's more of an issue of what's the likelihood of another self-storage facility coming in, meeting all of these particular standards. They would have to accumulate, you know, one and a half acres.
Yeah.
And in that area, I'm not so sure there's that much land to do that. But if they, if we, and the other thing, too, and we don't have in here yet, and this is pretty, I think this is very important. If you notice in the yellow, I put "to be inserted," the narrative about architecture. So I think the board may want to hear from the applicant. Again, I did include the renderings that show the nature of the self-storage facility that's proposed. I would recommend that there be a very detailed narrative explaining, you know, that this is a high-quality facility, all of the finishes. So I'd recommend that a narrative be included in the plan, demonstrating exactly what type of product needs to be produced. This is not to allow a, you know, an ugly metal box, like the old-school self-storage places that maybe were built 20 years ago. This is, I think, a very different product.
No, I mean, the conceptual plan looks very attractive. I'm just asking sort of a general planning question. I mean, I would like to, at least my opinion, and obviously, we'll go down the board, starting with Seal, because she had a question, I think. But, yeah, I think the impervious coverage is a little high. I'd like to keep that a little more, more toward 85 maybe, but that's just my opinion.
Well, this question may be for the applicant, but I'd like to hear Mark's comment on it. I know that you can't use pervious pavement where trucks are gonna come in, and trucks could come into a storage unit, but what about the fast-food area?
Yeah, I certainly can't answer that.
You can't answer that? Okay, well, I'll ask the applicant.
But just, one thing to remember, too, is this is an ordinance, not a site plan. So issues like that, absolutely, you'd want to ask during site plan. But if they, you know, you can certainly ask them now, if they have that answer now, you know, we'll see.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, would you want to hear from the applicant at this point?
At a very high level, since it's not a site plan, I don't want to delve into a site plan, because obviously, they'll be back for that. But, yeah, I mean, at a level that we're addressing it here in terms of bulk standards and stuff, I'm sure we can hear from them. Before we do, are there any other questions the board may have, where they've heard so far from Mark? Alright, why don't we open it up to the applicant, and our attorney will swear in. Or do you have to swear in, and don't have to swear?
It's a work session. Yeah, it's a work session.
Alright, we'll just be more formal, informal.
So, but for the record, Mr. Chairman, my name is Bob Smith. I'm a licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey. And I have with me the principal of inside properties, and that's Mr. Paul Brown. We also have our IT guy, who can show anything upside-down, backwards, and inside-out. And then we have Grant Lewis, who's our professional engineer. And if I can, just before we talk too much about this, but dealing with the generic question that you raised about the... How presidential is 90% impervious for anything else in the way of self-storage around the town? The answer is it's not presidential at all. This is a redevelopment project. Development process, the great thing about the law is that it lets planning boards and town councils make very specific recommendations that don't apply to anyplace else except in the redevelopment zone where you allow it. And what we'll do is put a little justification on why that number is the number. By way of background, I'd like to ask Mr. Brown, we don't have to be sworn, but maybe Mr. Brown can come to the table, just so you get a little feeling about who we are. Alright, Paul Brown, say hello to everybody and tell us who we are.
Okay. Thank you. I have been a self-storage owner for about 10 years now. I went to college to get a construction management degree, and was one of the lucky people to graduate in September of 2007. And I got my first job, and the second week in my job trailer, I saw the economy just disappear. So I'm the first generation of the modern depression. My grandparents always got oranges for Christmas and told me about that their whole life, and we're kind of the next big generation. So, you know, I was working in Los Angeles for a big construction company, building rights for Disneyland, and they kiboshed all their future projects. Probably half the construction in the country shut down immediately. And, you know, luckily, I was the youngest and the lowest-paid on the totem pole, and I worked a lot of hours, so I was able to keep my job. And then in 2010, you know, you just, we knew job growth was gonna be stagnant, so I decided I might as well try to be an entrepreneur, because you don't really have much to lose at this point. So I found a self-storage facility that was in foreclosure in Florida. I was married, I had two kids at the time, and, you know, used a credit card to buy two plane tickets to Jacksonville, because my kids were under two and they flew for free. So we went to Jacksonville, we bought the first property. I walked in the facility, the manager was smoking a cigarette, it smelled terrible. If you smoke, that's not what I'm, I'm just saying, the way they ran the business was not a professional way that I was used to, running things from, just coming from building for Disney World, where we weren't allowed to have our shoes untied. So the intent was, look at this product type, look at who's using it, why are they using it, and how can we do it better? So first thing I did is I said, "Look, if you want to work here, that's fine. You can't smoke in the building, and you can't live here. I will increase your salary from minimum wage and free rent to a standard living wage where you can go live a lot..." I will increase your salary from minimum wage and free rent to a standard living wage where you can go live a life and we will run a business when you're at work. So we bought everyone slacks and polos and we started cleaning up the properties and I used what limited construction knowledge I have, well, I guess it was a lot at that point, but to fix these properties up and run them like a business. The market really liked it, people, the customers liked what we did, I was very accommodating to them. We found success in our first facility, we bought another and another and another. And within eight years, we had seventy-three properties in thirteen states and we were the seventh-largest self-storage company in the country. In two thousand and sixteen, we sold the company, me and my partners did. I was thirty-four at the time, I had no intention of doing anything other than working. And along the path of building seventy-two storage facilities, I had a construction company we had built that was about fifty employees. And I had no intention of laying everybody off because the buyer of the storage facilities only ran real estate, they didn't, they don't build anything. So in two thousand and sixteen, we opened up the doors as a self-storage-only general contractor. And for the last two years, I've built only self-storage facilities. However, I haven't been impressed with developers I work for. I don't like to cut corners, I don't like to cut costs, I don't like to build things cheaper, I, you know, I I I had success and I knew it came from doing things the right way. So last year, I found an equity partner, Global Logistics Property, they're the largest industrial landlord in the in the world. They're a two hundred, a sixty-billion-dollar company, two hundred million square feet of industrial big Amazon million-square-foot type of boxes. They like self-storage and they said that they would come and be my investor. So we started last year building properties, our first one was in the town of Piscataway. If if you mind, I could pass these out real quick. There's only, I'm sorry.
Bob, there's another mic right there next to you.
We only have one for about every two people. We we like to save the trees here.
We can share.
So you want to go to the first slide on? Go go to the one, go down to the one of this picture of New Jersey. So throughout the course of building self-stores throughout the country, I learned that saturation is a very important thing, meaning what is saturation? How many apartments can a town have? How many McDonald's? How many this? How many that? And seven square feet of self-storage per person in a community is saturation. You get above seven, rents start going lower, rents go lower, you can't pay your mortgage, it forecloses and it goes in disrepair and then some guy has an opportunity and buys the note, you know, the whole cycle. So seven square feet of saturation. Right now, here in Franklin Township, we have about three and a half. So we're half of the national average for saturation. So I liked the market, I started looking for property and we came across the Frank's Hardware site. Frank's Hardware has been a family business for, I think, two generations or so. But someone called Home Depot and Lowe's have done a really good job at selling hardware and I think these folks have created value in their real estate and it's more profitable for them to sell their building than to keep running a hardware store. And I assume they're going to go play golf in Florida now, so hats off to them. There's also a Sunny's Diner right next to it. That picture in the lower right-hand corner of your packet there, I'm sure you all know Sunny's. That picture is not up to date because the parapet wall is now collapsed into the building and it's not in the best of shape. So we found this site and thought it would be great for self-storage. I like the proximity to Rutgers University, nationally-rated university, nationally-rated business school, very well-built university. So we then proceeded to design some conceptual ideas for self-storage. So if you go to the self-storage renderings, so I am, I keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, so right there. So I am a firm believer, a lot of national chains have this idea of how do we create efficiency? America is the same thing over and over and over again. I had five million square feet of self-storage, seventy-three locations, thirteen states. This country is the same thing over and over and over again. So McDonald's builds the same thing, Taco Bell builds, everyone wants it the same because it group doesn't require much brain power. I am the exact opposite. I like the Frank Gehry approach where I believe architecture should blend in with the community. I think it should look like it belongs. And I don't think you need to pollute your skyline with big red and orange boxes like Cube Smart and self-storage. I think they're hideous and I never have liked them. So how did I overcome that? Well, I hired the best architects, not from a consulting standpoint, but to work in my office full-time for us so that we can give the attention that this stuff needs. So this facade, this facade here we took, we drove down to Rutgers, drove the student buildings there, drove the new buildings they're building. Very great traditional American architecture, brick facades, black Brooklyn-style windows, things that really are architectural staples that won't go out of business. Why do I do this? Well, traditionally in self-storage, ninety percent of your customer clientele came from traditional drive-by approach. We crossed that threshold in about two thousand and four, where we then went down to seventy, sixty, fifty by two thousand and six. Fifty percent of your customers came from internet-driven leads, meaning Google, Yahoo, Yahoo, any of the other fifty-two search engines that were ranked. And then in two thousand and twelve, we now crossed that threshold again where seventy percent of our clients now come from mobile search, your cellphone. Twenty percent come from internet and the remaining ten percent come from drive-by. So a large part of our business, we were one of the first self-storage operators to implement an SEO, which is search engine optimization using the internet for your marketing opposed to Yellow Pages, White Pages, billboards. So I took those dollars and rolled the dice and said, we're going to find the best internet people, we're going to bring them in-house, they're going to be our partners and we're going to go from a website-only approach. What does that allow us to do? It allows us to build buildings that look like they belong because people aren't looking for the red box or the orange box. People find us on their internet, they take their cellphone and they clip it to the magnet on their dashboard and they follow the green line to our self-storage facility. And that's exactly what I want them to do. We make it easy, we make it convenient, and that allows us to make it look like it belongs in the community. And I don't need to sit before you with a big red four-story box and say, you know, however the big guys do it, I don't know. So this is why we've left the architectural description open because I don't want, number one, I don't want competition, clearly. I'd be a fool to tell you otherwise as a businessman. But I can also tell you I'll build a building here that looks like it belongs. And by so doing, I'll spend two or three times as much on my facade to make the town feel comfortable with me building something that is going to look like it belongs here and be part of the of the community. The last important statistic I want to tell you is who's our who's our customers these days? Traditional traditionally, it was people who had too much stuff. And I think a lot of times people still associate self-storage with people who have too much stuff, which is true. But right now, we are again crossing a different threshold. When we first started, we would do customer surveys. At the end, we had sixty thousand tenants, so we had a lot of information and data. And our managers are incentivized and get bonuses based on the information that they are they fill out and report to us. So we know how to build our facilities and who to cater to. So traditionally, when I first started the business, we were three to five percent small business. Meaning maybe you ran an internet business, maybe you had inventory, maybe you were a pharmaceutical representative, maybe you were a small contractor, et cetera. Those were three to five percent of our business. Those are now pushing almost thirty percent of our business. And I think that has to do with a couple of things, I don't know for sure. But I think it has to do with more people working from home, more people have the opportunity to utilize the internet to work from home and not have to rent office space or not have to work traditionally. And that's kind of where we're at. The other sixty percent, it's kind of a plethora of historical family stuff, there's divorce situations. There is, you know, life situations where people pass on and maybe they don't want to let go of the family heirlooms and they want to hang on to them. And as kids get older, they, you know, whatever, a number of things. So we think that trend's going to continue to go in that direction. And then the last statistic that wasn't ever measured that we're measuring now is we think three to five percent of our customers are the next generation, which means we rent, we're renters, we're mobile. And nowadays, the average apartment has shifted from, I think, nine hundred and fifty square feet to six hundred and fifty square feet is the average size of a new apartment being built in America. And if you have a one-bedroom apartment and you want to have a hobby and you want to get a second bedroom, would you rather pay, you know, three dollars a square foot per month in rent for another bedroom? Or would you rather pay a dollar fifty for a storage unit and keep your ancillary goods there? We're being the later, they have storage units. So with the downsides of the average living dwelling, the space is being accommodated through cheaper construction of self-storage rather than fully-finished apartment buildings. So we'd like to work with the town to come up with an architectural narrative to make make sure that you guys are happy with what we built and the town stays that way. A little bit about me in a nutshell.
And we've been working with your TRC, I think we've now, we're on meeting number four, does that sound about right? All right, and we've been trying to solve problems and make sure everything was. And I think we're in pretty good shape in terms of the TRC. Nobody jumped up and threw a chair at us the last time we were there. So I think we're in pretty good shape. I'd like to ask Grant Lewis to come forward. Grant is our professional engineer. And Grant, we asked you to take a look at the ordinance and help to create it. Mr. Arcini, Chairman Arcini asked a question, why are we seeking a ninety percent maximum pervious pervious coverage?
Good evening, everyone. Just to introduce myself, my name again is Grant Lewis, I'm a professional licensed engineer with the firm Dresner-Robin. We're located in Fairfield, New Jersey and have been working with Mr. Brown and his team to create the concept plan here that you have before you. As Mr. Smith indicated, we have been to the TRC meeting numerous times, working with Mr. Healy and others in the township to fine-tune what was the originally presented concept plan so that it is something that complies with the ordinance, is something that the professionals and other members of the TRC committee are happy with. And that's essentially what has brought us here to the concept plan that you have before you now. Going back, again, we've been working with Mr. Healy on on the on developing the ordinance. You know, after his draft, we've reviewed it and as he had mentioned earlier, it's largely based on the zoning statistics that are identified in the bulk table on the concept plan. And while we have fluctuated a bit with lot coverage, the plan that you see before you is just below ninety percent at eighty-six and change for lot coverage. So we're hovering between what was indicated is largely the eighty-five percent, which is the maximum coverage in in other areas of this redevelopment, the RC Zone, and what is proposed at ninety percent. Some of the additional coverage that has come has been as a result of the access lane that goes around the rear of the self-storage facility. What you'll see there, and this was done at the request of the fire official, was to provide a twenty-foot fire access lane around the entire property, which also serves to tenants of the self-storage facility so that they can access some of the exterior units. You can see on the conceptual renderings. So the twenty-foot is represented there with the drive aisle and then the striped access areas around the building are for people to pull off and not be in the way of the fire access lane. The striping on the outbound is really just to accommodate the fire truck turning movement that we ran to ensure that the fire access lane is not just a standard width that's needed by the National Fire Code, but actually can, the township's apparatus can actually navigate around the building.
So it sounds to me like you're closer to eighty-five than you are to ninety.
That is correct.
And you have a fairly large lot as it stands, which is, you know, as Mark pointed out, maybe somewhat unusual. So your actual percent of unimpervious coverage, I mean, and 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 gross, right, is generally going to be larger, I think, because you have such a large lot.
Correct.
You tell me anything about your stormwater, how you plan to handle that? Not to get into any great detail, but I mean, it's sort of like, well, again, it'll help alleviate my any concern about impervious?
Certainly. So it's anticipated that we're likely going to have two independent systems here because what this project is proposing is two separate lots. There won't be, to my knowledge, common ownership between the quick-service restaurant and the self-storage facility. So they'll need to be able to operate independently, you know, in the future. So the concept plan identifies these two lots. You know, as 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 you can see from the concept plan, you know, the site improvements take up a significant portion of the properties that are being assembled as part of this project. So it's likely going to be an underground detention basin for both facilities, two two independent, you know, whether the the plastic arch chambers or concrete structures, depending on, you know, what kind of coverage we can achieve over the basins with groundwater depth and everything, but some means of underground stormwater detention.
That's kind of what I thought it would be, so that, and of course, obviously, there's state standards for that, so that that's actually a good.
Absolutely. And the other thing I wanted to point out, we did try to minimize some of the impervious coverage as much as possible. You know, just to call your attention to, some of the drive aisle whis were at twenty-four feet wide. So we we were cognizant of trying to keep this down as as much as we can and and shoot for the eighty-five that was in the ordinance in in other districts in this redevelopment area.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like you're close. I mean, it does seem like, you know, at least from the concept renderings, if that's really, you know, what's going to be built, it it it's definitely doesn't look. I mean, I take your point about what other self-storage facilities do look like and it doesn't look like that. I mean, it looks like, looks like, like you said, kind of a dorm or an office building or something like that and it's very good architectural. I mean, I I I don't, I don't see any any real, you know, downside to to anything. I was concerned about the planning, but as you said, you know, it's not, it's not presidential, which is which is the key thing.
The lighting is all LED, I assume?
It certainly will be. We haven't designed the lighting plan and that'll be forthcoming with a full, complete site plan application to the board. But I I don't specify anything but LED these days. I mean, for the past ten years, the cost of an LED fixture for a site light as originally, it was a bit of a sale to a client because there was the upfront cost, but then the savings were achieved afterward. Now, I don't even know if you buy the metal halide or the high-pressure sodium unless you're replacing a bulb fixture.
And my question about the pervious pavement, can some be used around the fast-food facility to help reduce the? No, no, pervious pervious pavement.
You know, I think that's an important thing to talk about. We, so when we say pervious pavement and, you know, it's it's not something that our office will traditionally utilize in travel way or cartways just because it comes with a lot of challenges. The DEP in the BMP manual does have a section in the manual for pervious pavement. And that can either be through a special asphalt mix that allows water to seep through it. It goes into a stone bed below it with voids and then that kind of acts like a pseudo-detention basin.
The township has used it right for the park, that's right before you get to the municipal building area.
Okay. Some of the research that I've done and and articles that I've read, and I don't know what the township's experience with it is and its specific application in the park, is that there there are challenges as far as, you know, you certainly have to keep up on it in maintenance. I mean, since we live in New Jersey.
You have to keep it clean, basically.
You have to keep it clean, you have to vacuum it out.
Well, I would expect you, because that looks so nice, that you're going to keep that clean anyhow.
For for sure, that's the easy part for this project. Some of the problem with the asphalt, though, it will it will spall. Some people think it's it's great to use on the parking stalls, but not in the drive aisles because that's where the traffic is traveling. It's actually starting to. It's actually starting to find out that it's the opposite. You'll, you'll get increased spall of that pervious asphalt in the parking stalls, because people are turning their wheels, and the wheels are sitting there grinding away on it as they either pull in or pull out. They're making their turn movement, and it's less abrasive to the asphalt in the travelway where they're going straight. I guess in short answer to your question, I don't have any objection to the use of pervious asphalt or pervious pavers sometimes is a better use in the parking stalls. I mean, it adds a, an interest. Traditionally, the reason you're using that pervious pavement of whatever kind, pavers, is to help reduce or because you can't fit your detention basin. And in this case, we haven't designed that yet. I'm not anticipating an issue with like a long linear subsurface detention basin. We're gonna have to treat this water. So it has to go into a manufactured treatment device and then go into the detention basin. Getting it into that treatment device so that it can remove the fines and the total suspended solids, which is part of the state mandate, is challenging with the pervious pavement. Because what happens is, like we were talking about, it gets right down into that stone void. Well, then it just wants to infiltrate. Well, how do you capture that then? Treat it, paint it, and then send it on its way so that you're compliant with the state regulations?
So I, I would imagine, once you do your soil borings, test pits borings and permeability tests, you'll have a better indication whether that could be used on this specific site.
I, I think it's a best use.
I mean, you do have bordering wetlands on the rear side, right?
That's true. And we'll certainly have to do a full geotech report and analysis, not only for the building design, but for the stormwater design to determine the groundwater and, and things like that. The point I was driving at was that pervious surface, pavements or, or blocks are easier to use on pedestrian walkways because if you don't, if you have to meet those water quality standards of the state, as opposed to draining and enforcing. Because what can happen is if the oil runs off of a vehicle, it goes right into the ground. It doesn't have a chance to be treated by the treatment device. So I would caution against, I'm not an opponent to it, there's just challenges that come along with it to use it in driveways and parking lots.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, if I could get back to the ordinance on section three. So, so this was on the topic, I believe, of really the impervious. And I, and I think that that's the main issue, unless any of the board members have any questions on any of the other standards. But you may wanna have a discussion if the board is okay with the ninety or, or not. I know the chairman had some comments on that, so.
Well, I mean, I, I wouldn't even call it an issue. It's just like, you know, could it get lower? We always like that. And so it's now that, now that I hear it's just over eighty-six, that's more than halfway to, you know, they're meeting, not meeting, because that's the way it was designed, but they're, they're closer to eighty-five than not, so. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Is any, any of the members of the board have any questions on any of the other standards in section three?
I just wanted to know whether you were okay with the side yard requirement of fifty-five feet alongside property lines directly abutting a residential lot. Looking at your plan, I can see you have the, the twenty feet for buffer and then thirty-six feet between that and the building. So I guess you're designing to that standard.
That's correct. That was one of the target goals when we started on the first concept plan, which actually wasn't meeting that. And then as this plan evolved over the various TRC meetings, as we pulled, we, we slid the self-storage building up closer to the lot line with the restaurant. We did what we had to. We have the retaining wall there. While a grading plan hasn't been worked out, we certainly envision at least a, a moderate retaining wall to hold back here, because the site does slope up in a way from Route twenty-seven. So, you know, a glorified landscaping wall essentially would have to be constructed, since we have such a large, single-level slab for the self-storage facility.
One of the things that I do like is that this was a very barren area before the wall wall came, and we created a little bit of green there. And you seem to be carrying that through onto this property, which I appreciate. The more of a green strip we can get in front of the thing, the better. So thank you for that.
And, and with respect to that, with respect to the ordinance, there are general design standards in the redevelopment plan that we frankly don't have to change, but they would have to abide by when they make their site plan application.
So if I can, let me bring up a topic. The maximum setback for the quick-service restaurant is currently listed as twenty-five, correct?
Yeah, let's, well, let's, so I think we're good with section three. Okay, so then, yeah, thank you for, for moving that along. So section four, this is the, the requirements for the other, these are the general standards for commercial uses in the Renaissance Commercial Zone. The quick-serve restaurant is already a permitted use, so we didn't have to change anything in terms of the, the uses. In looking at the ordinance, though, I, I recognize that there's standards for lots, less than twenty thousand square feet, standards for lots more than twenty thousand square feet, standards for, for blocks along Franklin Boulevard. What this ordinance does is basically, well, first of all, there are no lots along Franklin Boulevard in this zone, so that goes away, because it's not even applicable. And, and the ordinance is proposing to basically streamline the ordinance, just have one set of standards. It corrects a typo. It, it indicates maximum lot coverage of eighty-five percent. That's really impervious coverage of eighty-five percent. That's the way our ordinance is defined. And then recommending a maximum lot coverage, which is actually building coverage of fifty percent, and that's consistent with other similar zones. Mr. Smith had made, made mention of the front yard. So there is this standard where, in this zone, where you have a minimum front yard requirement of twenty-five, of fifteen, and a maximum of twenty-five. I, I think there, the intent is to try to have the buildings closer to the street with the emphasis of trying to have the parking either to the side or, or to the rear. The applicant has, or the future applicant has ma- made a point that the, what they're representing right now is a Starbucks on the side that would face Kevin Appuzio, which again, as indicated before, that is, that is a front. That would be a front yard, because that is a street. That would exceed the twenty-five percent, or I'm sorry, the twenty-five feet. And, you know, I thought, you know, their intention or their, their goal would be to have a, a clean application. I, I don't have, would not have an issue with having the, the ordinance read something to the effect of a maximum setback of twenty-five feet on Route twenty-seven and forty feet on side streets. I, I think that's consistent with the intent. Again, I think the main thing again is to have the, the frontage along Somerset Street. Again, have the building in the front and the parking either to the side or the rear. So.
I started thinking along that same line. Immediately you brought up the problem.
So, and then the last thing is, and this gets to something that, I, I don't wanna say precedential, but, but does affect other applications. The, the applicant, right now, our ordinance requires drive aisles be twenty-six feet in width. And their proposal has twenty-four feet aisles. I frankly wasn't comfortable just changing it from twenty-six to twenty-four, because this does, this are, these are general design standards that would apply to all commercial uses in Renaissance Commercial Zone. So the language that I've recommended is that it's, it says twenty-six feet in width, but may be reduced to twenty-four feet by the planning board at the time of site plan approval. So that would again give, you know, the applicant the potential for flexibility to go down to twenty-four, but they would have to basically demonstrate to you that the twenty-four feet is adequate, again, in the context of a site plan review.
And it would give us a chance to get John House's comments.
John House's, and, you know, there, there are competing objectives there. You know, of course, John House, you know, well, he wants wider aisles, but then twenty-four feet obviously results in less impervious, and we just talked about that. So, and that's, that's usually the reason, one of the reasons for a, a smaller drive aisles is, is less impervious. It also is the more typical standard. Franklin may be alone in requiring twenty-six feet, to be honest with you. But nonetheless, again, it would give the applicant the opportunity to request it, and it would give the planning board the, the option to approve it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the wider drive aisles are more maybe suited to the, you know, restaurant in front and less necessary for the self-storage, right? Because you're really not gonna be driving and parking, like, you know, the Starbucks or whatever it is gonna be. I assume Starbucks is a, a thought, or maybe that's what it's gonna be, but whatever it's going to be, you know, you're gonna park and go in, right? You're really not, I mean, yeah, you're gonna do that for a self-storage facility, but not in the same way you do it for.
And, and again, that will be something that you can discuss at, at the time of site plan.
And, and not to, not to preempt that, but one of the things that will testify when we are in for site plan is the relatively infrequent use of the storage units. You know, you, you do not have a boulevard with traffic running around in circles around the site plan or around the self-storage. It's relatively infrequent, which I think is another justification for the smaller drive aisle and more non-impervious space. So listen, to, to try and get the ball over the finish line, we might have a suggestion for architectural language, and then we're.
Yes, I would request that language draft from, from, from your side. I mean, I think nobody, there's nobody, nobody could better describe the architecture than the architects that put it together. So, you know, we would certainly request and appreciate that language from you, and then we'll tweak it and incorporate it appropriately into the.
Right, but that would not hold the board up from moving forward with the ordinance, would it?
I don't know. Well, there's no formal action for this board tonight. And I think it's, it's up to the board if they need to see that language. But basically, the language that would be incorporated would basically describe the architecture that's been presented to you. The ordinance is, as far as future steps, it's, it's gonna go to land use, the land use committee of council. Then it would have to get introduced, and after it's introduced, it's gonna come back to you formally for your review. So if you have questions about and comments on the, the narrative about the architecture, you could certainly make the comments at that point.
I just wanted to say something about the, the drive aisle width. Should it make a difference whether the parking is angled or perpendicular? Because perpendicular probably takes more space to get in and out of it than angled.
It, well, I'll, I'll say that I, I don't recall offhand if our design standards accommodate for that. What I can say is typically it does. I know RSIS and other, you know, there, there are def- absolutely reduced aisle widths depending on the, the angle of the parking spaces. But their, their concept has ninety-degree parking.
Yeah, it doesn't help them if we.
If I may, if I may add, I, I believe Mr. Healy is right in that in the ordinance and every other ordinance in New Jersey, the, the drive aisle widths become reduced as you angle the parking, and the steeper the angle, the smaller the drive, uh, drive aisle has to be. And the focus of the amendment we were looking, seeking for that general design condition only applies to the perpendicular parking spaces to what was pointed out as more traditional drive aisle width. I mean, twenty-four feet by no means is compact or urban standard, like you may find in Jersey City or Hoboken. It's a very rural, typical standard.
Would you think of angling the parking spaces? Because given the angle that the building is showing and given what it looks to be your circulation plan, it, it looks almost that if you would come into park rather than go through the, the, what I assume to be a drive-through aisle, would actually be advantageous if you were to park in an angle.
The, the challenge, well, are you looking at like the eight, ten spaces on the self-storage or for the quick-service restaurant?
I think I'm really referring to the quick-service restaurant, but the same could be true, given that they're angled and, and just going sort of in a different direction, but the, the ones for the self-storage facility as well.
The, the challenge with angling any of them is it limits you then what you do when you leave the space. You then have to back out and head in that direction. And one of the adjustments that we made during the TRC meeting was, if you look to the driveway exit onto Kevin Appuzio of the quick-service restaurant, that was a two-way in and out, egress-ingress. And what we've done is we've created it now as only a means of egress. And that was at the request of, I believe, the police department, because there was concern about the queuing, some problems that have been occurring at other drive-through facilities. I think at Dunkin' Donuts in town. So and the queuing.
Yeah, and, and on, on Schoolhouse, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not good.
So the point I was driving at was if you angle, say, those five spaces as you pull in off of the main drive on twenty, twenty-seven, you could very easily pull into, say, a forty-five-degree parking stall there. But then you back out of it and you have to head out in the other direction. And then the same would be said for the nine spaces. So no one would ever really be pulling back out of that main two-way drive entrance onto the common driveway.
Yeah, I see what you mean.
If that makes any sense. And the same would be said, because the circulation that we envisioned for this is, and that was another adjustment that we made, was that Myrtle is gonna be extended to the property. And the reason for that, again, was at the request of the police chief and to adjust queuing issues and possible backing up at Kevin Appuzio or our main driveway. So what it allows people to do is either leave the drive-through or anywhere on the facility. They pull out onto the Myrtle extension, and then they can go down, I can't remember the street beyond Wawa there, but it's a signalized intersection, so then they can safely make a left onto Route twenty-seven at a signalized intersection.
So your access on Kevin Appuzio Avenue is two-way to the storage facility, right? And it's, but it looks like to the quick-service restaurant, you're only two-way access and, no, maybe it's not even two-way.
No, that's, that's.
It's one way in and one way out.
That is one way around the building.
So your circulation is you come in from twenty-seven and you go, you go out to Kevin Appuzio for the.
Yes, because what's, what's occurred, that's, that was another element. We had to reduce the impervious in the drive aisle width as much as possible down to what you see as a twenty-foot drive aisle. That's a, a very generous one-way drive aisle for just passenger vehicles, but it's the minimum for a fire access lane. It's coming down.
All right, no, I mean, that makes, that makes more sense now that we talked about the circulation. Okay. Bob, I think you, you had a question?
Yeah, and, and this is more for Mark. Now that this, assuming that this passes, it becomes part of the redevelopment area. Does this have to go back to the, I know, I think the Redevelopment Agency was sort of introduced to this idea, but does it, would the final thing have to go back to the Redevelopment Agency?
No, I mean, I, I've been keeping the Redevelopment Agency, you know, aware of this as it's developed. It is in a redevelopment area. They can develop in accordance with the redevelopment plan. It would be up to the applicant if they want to be a designated redeveloper, and that's advantages to, to that, that they may want to, to do that, but that's, it's not, it's not required.
So what happens after tonight goes to council, right?
It's gonna go, yeah, first it's gonna go to the land use committee, then it's gonna get introduced, and then it'll come back to you. That, that'll act, that'll be the, you know, the formal ordinance, and that'll have the language, the architectural language we talked about incorporated into it.
So what do we have to do tonight, just?
There's, there's really no formal action. This is a work session, so I think I have my direction. So we, we have, we have. No, 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 you're not getting a building permit tomorrow. You kid, but don't be. People get site plan approval and they show up the next day for the building permits. It doesn't quite work that way.
All right, so we have our feedback on that ordinance, and I think that we have one more about houses of worship, right?
Yeah, one more.
So you guys, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your courtesy.
Looks like a great plan and concept. I take you at your word that you'll, you'll execute that, and so, thank you.
I think it highlights, uh, one of the important things that we need in this, uh, our community. Ability for people to come in and give us their take about how to grow a business. I really appreciate that and I will look forward to work with you.
Thanks, Bobby. All right.
Okay, so the next.
Hammer through this a little quicker on this one.
I, I, I think this, I, I think it's straightforward in that the, um, this is also in a redevelopment area. There's a, the zone called the Renaissance, I'm sorry, the residential infill zone, the RF zone. And it's basically the only residential zone in town where places of worship are not a permitted use. And the problem that, 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 that presents is in a redevelopment zone, a redevelopment district, you cannot apply for a de-use variance. So what this basically does is so if somebody, and, and there is at least one place of worship currently existing, they don't even have the legal ability to apply to, to, to the zoning board to, to, um, you know, to expand. So, you know, this was brought to our attention. So this draft ordinance would allow places of worship in that RF zone. And basically, the ordinance is really pretty straightforward in that we already have standards. I took the standards that would apply, as they would apply in the R7 zone, which is the most similar zone to this residential infill, and basically incorporated that into this ordinance. So it has all of the standards that are, um, um, you know, the lot area, the buffering, the lighting, all of those, um, you know, I'll say protective standards that, you know, have a non-residential use in a residential zone. So all of those kind of design-related things, setbacks, things of that nature are incorporated just as they are in our other residential zones. That's my presentation.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it sort of makes sense. Board have any comments to that?
This will be a big improvement on the area.
Everything's after the, uh, last few pages of this packet, after all of the, uh, renderings of the one we just heard. Yeah, I, I don't have any questions. Makes sense, I guess. I mean, it's not that we see more churches coming in here. It's just that this existing one also has sort of no legal standing is part of the reason.
They, we, we did, we did have an application and, um, and, and if this goes through, you know, it'll be an application before you. And again, they, they really, they, they, they don't even have the option at this point to get a, a, a use variance, which would be problematic legally. So this again, uh, uh, you know, provides some appropriate, allows it and also, you know, has the same standards as currently exist.
Comments from the board on this, any? I guess your direction is no direction whatsoever. It's good to go.
No problems means it'll move forward and then again, it'll come back to you in the formal process.
Sounds good. Um, it's maybe like because of the rain, like maybe the one time I want an extra 10 minutes. I did not bring it umbrella. Um, but, um.
Check the radar, see if it's going anywhere.
The, um, the next meeting is going to be the first week of August, I guess, and then we have a hiatus, yes?
Yes, we do.
Until after, I believe, Labor Day. So, um, so there's a likelihood, I guess, that, I know in past years, even the August meeting has been sort of ca- ten- canceled because either the applicants are on vacation or this one will happen.
Well, I hope we're going to pass the master plan amendments then.
It's already on there. Right there, Ted. It's scheduled.
I think, I, I had a message from Sustainable Jersey that they'd finished the review of our application, but they didn't send the comments yet.
The, the, uh, everything would be ready except I received, um, about a page of comments from a certain council member on the historic element. So I need to make those changes and then.
Just be glad I haven't read the others. The, the environmental commission was asking about the, um, ERI. And I explained that, you know, the work they'd done on it in 2016 is now coming to fruit.
Yep. Well, it'll be, uh, it'll be on for that meeting in August.
Can you please, uh, repeat the date for the August meeting? Seventh?
All right. Well, that's when we shall convene again. If there's no other business, um, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. All in favor? All right. Have a great night.